And I declare this meeting South Carthage Board of Mayor and all in open for what business may become for yet. I need a roll call, please.
Seth Dillahay?
Here.
Shane Gregory?
Here.
Kristy Grissom?
Here.
And Sam Merly?
Here.
Okay, um, if you guys don't mind everybody that's participating, if you could keep your microphones muted until we get to you on the agenda, just so we can move along and get to everybody in a orderly fashion. All right.
Okay, but have y'all had a chance to look at the March fourth, two thousand twenty-one public hearing minutes?
I make a motion that we accept the March fourth public hearing minutes of two thousand twenty-one as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Uh.
Motion carried. Uh, have you had a chance to look at the March four, two thousand twenty-one regular meeting minutes?
Y'all moving?
Go ahead.
Now, Kristy, go right ahead.
Okay, uh, motion to approve March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. City Council meeting minutes as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Motion carried. Of course, fun is from the mayor. We all had water, uh, we had, we were at the Donaldson Station, we had two, two pumps burned up, plus a panel box, and we've had, we've had them down here all weekend, had to, had to bring a motor in to bypass the pumps and this morning we hit it quit, we had to get on and bring another and replace it. My main screw's been, uh, moving mud all week, but, so, uh, before we got on the, the weather so far. Oh, business, uh, first reading of ordinance number twenty-four fourteen and ordinance establishing court cost, court cost breakdown. Y'all had a copy of that before?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
You tried to review it?
Yeah, everybody, you all reviewed it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
And you all agree with it?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. I agree with it too. Can we get a, get a motion on that?
I make a motion that we accept, uh, or represent the, uh, reading of the ordinance number twenty dash, uh, fourteen, an ordinance establishing court costs and fines, court cost breakdowns on the, uh, the previous reading that, uh, Attorney Brooks had made.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion carried. New business, uh? I don't have anything, uh?
Hang on, I want to make y'all aware of something.
Go ahead, Richard.
We're getting something heavy. Uh, on a new business, I spoke with the county attorney today, or he and I spoke, and they are getting ready to, uh, they want to answer from us about, uh, you know, paying Terry that fine he's imposed, so, uh, I told him to call Paige and put it on the May, uh, agenda, and, uh, I think I even told Paige about it today, so that's gonna be on the agenda of, of May meeting, so if you got any, you know what I'm talking about, Carthage and Gordonsville have paid theirs, and now they're, Terry's press in the court. The county attorney to get our answer to what we're gonna be, see, I'll be thinking about it because we're gonna have to deal with it in May. With you, whatever you want to do, everybody understand?
Yes, sir.
If you got any thoughts about it, or determine what you want to do, uh, without having to, uh, uh, think about it in May, but I would go ahead and, and, uh, if you have any questions about it, call Paige and, and we'll try to get an answer as best we can. This is the, uh, one about the, uh, uh, where he's charging more money because he's having to do the town reappraisal and what have you, and by the way, in two weeks, Terry's gonna be sending out the new bills. So don't anybody fall over, we'll just take, we'll take it all up come May, as to what we're gonna do, everybody understand that? Terry's not gonna be here, but the attorney for the, uh, county will be here. And, uh, be there, and if you have questions, then, uh, you'll be able to, uh, take them up with him and we'll go from there. Um, also, if you all haven't received and not, uh, I don't know about it, uh, we've got a new map of what they're, and what they're gonna do on Highway seventy supposedly. The thing they haven't done, uh, Paige ran it off, it should be hanging somewhere on a billboard out there. And, uh, if you had a chance to run it off today, it should be, it's about six pages long, and for some reason it's letter size, but, uh, you might want to take a look at it. And, uh, it, of course, is made available to the public once, maybe tomorrow, no, y'all not working on it, well anyhow, next business day, they'll be able to, uh, put it and make copies for people if they want to see what they're gonna do on Highway seventy. Unfortunately, they sent it to me, Honorable Mayor, I said, no, whoa, 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 send that back, the Honorable Mayor is, uh, is not Richard, no. So I made sure they went back to Hollis's desk real quick, so anyhow, that's all for now.
Yeah, I have, I have a copy of that, I think Paige is gonna put it up out there right now. We, we do work tomorrow.
You do work, okay. Well, I don't, I'll just tell you, so don't call tomorrow.
All right, if you had a chance to look at the police report from, uh, report from March two thousand twenty-one?
Yes.
David, you got anything to add to that?
No, sir, not at this time.
I make a motion that we accept the March police report as written.
Me in the March twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, March twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Kristy, you second it?
Yes.
Any discussion? Motion carried. That's the next thing on the agenda is grievance for the citizens, Paige, you ready to go with that?
Whenever they're ready, we, you can go ahead and unmute yourself, anybody?
Who's, uh, who's gonna be the spokesman?
I will, I'm Pastor Seth, a pastor Carthage Church of God, just down the road from you guys, and, uh, we got, excuse me, quite a few people here tonight that would, uh, um, I think they would like to maybe speak up and say a few things in concern to our flooding issues that we have in our community. Um, and just, just real quick to share what I've been through personally in our church parsonage here, uh, we were flooded, excuse me, the first go around was on February twenty-eighth, we were, we flooded and we had roughly about thirteen inches of water in my basement, uh, and it's due from the drain being too small for the, that goes under the road, it backed all the water up to probably roughly about five feet in the yard, all the way up around the house, and then it came in through my garage door and my, um, basement door down there. Uh, be glad to provide you guys plenty of videos and as well as pictures, um, it's kind of hard to do not in person, but, um, I'll be glad to email those to the city. Um, but we also flooded again on Saturday night with roughly fifteen to eighteen inches of water in places. Um, once again, flooding my basement and taking out the new drywall we just put in, had finished painted and all the insulation, all the other work that we had just done, uh, from pri- from the prior flood a month today, uh, prior to the one Saturday. Um, so we're, we're accruing a lot of damage, as you are very well and, uh, know that insurance will not cover it unless you have flood insurance. So I'm losing, when I say I'm losing, I lost because my renters insurance will not cover all my loss of personal, which, which also things that we can't replace such as my wedding pictures, my children's, uh, first year ornaments, uh, many other sentimental items that we lost in the first flood on February twenty-eighth. Uh, very fortunately, I didn't have anything down there Saturday night other than our, uh, electric fireplace. Um, so anyways, moving forward with that, we have accrued a lot of damages, um, our property is owned by the, um, Church of God of Tennessee, so, you know, the, the property isn't owned by the church here, it's owned by the, the, the state of Ten- uh, not state Tennessee, but the Church of God of Tennessee, based out of Cleveland, they have came out, assessed the damages, and they are actually considering asking me not to repair my home until we have a resolve from you guys. So my family and I are living upstairs in the parsonage in about eight hundred square feet-ish, give or take some, of four of us, and, uh, with all of our belongings from downstairs, and, um, so we, we just, we're here tonight because we're concerned. Uh, here tonight because we want to know what you guys are, are gonna do to help us get this problem resolved. Um, the last thing we want is for you guys to feel that we're attacking, we're not, we're concerned citizens. And, um, we have been affected two times, everybody here that, that's, you know, on the front row here, Butler and, and Mr. Lance here, they, they have been affected two times as well as, uh, as well as, um, many other businesses right there at the foot of your city hall, as y'all are very well aware of. So I guess my question to the council tonight and to the mayor, you know, I want to know, what are we doing? What are we doing to address these problems? What are we doing to, um, better our community, uh, as far as this rainwater runoff issue that we're having? Um, you know, I, I, I'm aware that we had an excessive amount of rain, uh, we get that. Butler gets that, Lance gets that, but at the same time, um, you know, obviously the weather patterns are changing here. Uh, since I've been here, moved to this community three years ago, uh, um, you know, we have had experience, nothing but in the month of late January, all the way through early March, just continuous rain. Um, you know, so we've seen the weather patterns change, we can't say that this is gonna be a once, a once in a hundred year flood. Um, obviously, it happened twice in one month, so, uh, I think what we're coming to you tonight as concerned citizens for our property, for our homes, for our businesses, for, for Lance's wellbeing, who now is probably most likely gonna have to go out of business. Um, that could all be prevented by us thinking forward and upgrading the infrastructure in our city that needs desperately to be updated.
Richard, would you like to address that?
Who?
Would you like to address that?
Me?
Yeah.
Well, I'm not a councilman now. Uh, we underst- we understand your concern. Uh, and the, all that the, that the city council can do is apply to the state, try to get you some help and change some of those culverts and what have you. So we're dealing with, uh, bureaucracy of the state of Tennessee and trying to get extra grants in order to do some of the rearranging that needs to be done in the town. As you are well aware, we've come up with having to, or you're not aware, I'm sorry. As the mayor was telling you to begin with, we have these, uh, sewer pump problems, and then, uh, we weren't aware of one of them going bad, but anyhow, the towns had to allocate fifty thousand dollars to keep sewage ruined. And, uh, that was not in the plan, we didn't understand that either, but it, it just has happened, so we're gonna have to do some redesigning, probably on the placement of the pump. But, uh, all we can do, uh, is to, uh, try to get the state to help us do something about the water drainage, you know, and so if you send the pictures to us, then, uh, I'll try to get, um, well, Paige will get in contact with the right person and send down the state and see what they can do, because that's state highway.
No, no, sir, that is not a state highway, that is owned by the city.
No, sir, it does not, thank you.
T-Dot would beg to differ with you, sir.
I know, and we'll go to court if we have to, but as of right now, it is not owned by, uh, it's still owned by the state.
Okay, I've been on the phone with, uh, Representative, uh, Terry Lynn Weaver, uh, as well as Representative Potey, he's aware of the situation. I did receive a phone call from Representative Weaver today, as well as a gentleman who is represented in T-Dot, and they are telling me that it is not owned by the state of Tennessee, that it was given over to the city when Highway fifty-three was finished. They gave it over to you guys, so, you know, we got to take ownership in what's, what's ours and what's not ours, and I think that there's a miscommunication between you and the state.
No, sir, it's not a miscommunication, and I don't think this is a time to argue it out, we can go to court if you'd like to, but in any gift in the state of Tennessee.
What was, you saying, take me to court, or are you taking the state of Tennessee to court?
State of Tennessee can take us to court, if that's what they choose to do, but in the state of Tennessee, the law is that if I give you something, we have to accept it. And the town of South Carthage, for various reasons, has not accepted the donation of that state, of that road, so it's still in the state of Tennessee. It's mine, until we take it, which, when I say we, I'm talking about the council, not me personally, I don't live in South Carthage, I live in Carthage. And, uh, that has been a matter of dispute when they came down, as I understand it, from the mayor, some of the councilmen, and said they were gonna do the repairs, they did them shoddy. And they're gonna have to redo this, and what they're looking at is, well, we paved the mains, the dividing line. And, uh, therefore, uh, we're complete, well, no, once again, and this is something that's been going on in Smith County for years, and a lot of your subdivisions. It is not until there is a, a motion second and acceptance by the political subdivision, whether it be, uh, the county or whether it be a municipality and acceptance, it's not ours. So I'm sure that anybody down there might tell you that, but that's not legally correct as it stands right now, it's the state.
So how, what are we doing as a city to get that corrected with the state of Tennessee? Because somebody's gotta take ownership of this, we, we keep.
State owns it.
Okay, but how, how are you gonna convince the state that they own it?
Well, it's simple, it's still, you know, once again, sir, with all due respect to you being a pastor of the church, this is something, if the state wants to give it to us and we haven't accepted yet, then they're gonna have to force us to take it unless we voluntarily take it, so it's up to the state to sue us and say, we did this, that, and the other, and we have defenses, and we'll have to run with it out in court.
Okay.
I kind of want to elaborate on what he's, what he's asking, to kind of put it in different words, I think he's asking what the city of South, can you hear me?
No.
I think he's asking what the city of South Carthage is willing to do, what the city of South Carthage is willing to do to help or figure out what is going on with this road and what we can do to, what, what are y'all willing to do to help us?
Now, that's not legal, that's gonna have to go to some of the councilmen and the mayor, I'm gonna defer that.
Simple.
Richard, it, uh, he was talking about the pump, six thousand dollars, uh, we gotta replace the whole pumping station, it got over it. It's forty-eight thousand dollars for the pumps and, and all of the pipes and everything in there, we've, uh, Wes Tom is ordering the parts to fix that. So.
Yeah, we're, I think. I think what he's trying to get to is, is the town of South Carthage, what plans, if any, to use councilman and use mayor, is what he's asking, plan to do to try to aid or help the flooding problem over there, that's what they're wanting to know.
Well, I'm willing to do what we, what I try to do to help the city, uh, get grants, and, uh, uh, that's pretty hard to do, uh. We've, we've been trying to get grants to replace our sewer system for years, they keep turning it down, so they split, uh, cities and, and small cities, and we thought we'd get it this year, but we, uh, we got turned down again. To tell you, to take, when I think about it, uh, we, we, like Richard said, we can, if you've got some documents, we turn them into the, Mr. Potey and Miss Weaver and, uh, their representatives, if, they ought to be able to get some help. Anybody else on the council want to?
Yeah, I'll speak in just a minute, Mayor Seth Dillahay, uh, Pastor London Ray, I know Ray personally, uh, of course, my satellite office that I run my, uh, that we have the insurance agency out of Wagner, but then, of course, I've, I've had to relocate to my house, you know, our electrical panel, that whole thing, the whole system's damaged, uh, beyond, at this point, it's completely shut down, so I understand your, your grief on having to relocate and get in a different area, uh, and, and kind of make it through this, and I was talking to the owner of the building, uh, Mr. Joey Nixon, of course, going through some things, uh, just some kind of futuristic thoughts of what we as a city could do and what we have the right to do and capability of doing. Uh, you know, goes without saying, the extreme expanse of, of restructuring the whole infrastructure of this, of this street from one point to the other, the different low line areas. And we know that, you know, after talking with, just with Joey and a couple other, uh, community members, the tiling's under these roads are obviously an issue, you know, it, it's, it's evident. And like you said, Seth, I mean, the, the, the weather pattern has changed extremely, uh, to, to the extreme, and we, we haven't seen weather like this consistently ever in this area, so, um, it's bringing on new concerns, and I, when I, when I first voiced it, what got hit kind of back to me, um, was the issues of having to go to repair these tiling's, we're gonna go, the one by your church goes under the road, and then it goes under the tracks and then across to the field over on the other side. And then the other one obviously filters into, you know, toward the river, back under through there, so both of them need to be double, if not triple in size, just to, just to get the flow, especially when it rains that heavy, not only that, but the debris that gets caught in those creekways that run down and, and more than likely have stopped up that whole drain, so my initial thought is, we need to send somebody down in there just to kind of see what's even there, I mean, it may be so cram packed full of just debris and things that have just kind of washed through over time that, you know, that could obviously help the, the situation immediately. And then, as far as a planning is concerned, get in touch with the state departments, the, the legislature, our representatives, and see what kind of loopholes, and lack of better word, that we have to jump through to get some sort of assistance just to, you know, restructure these these tiling's, because they're, they're running not only under a couple of city streets, and I know the argument on Highway fifty-three as it stands, obviously already, but, you know, that's, that's that street, plus we've got Highway seventy, which is a state highway that we're gonna have to, then you, then you've got to bring the state in, so I mean, that we've got, because I mean, you can't just go down in there and start boring out, you're gonna have to be ripping up stuff up top to really make it what it is, not only that, you're also crossing a railroad on your side, which is one thing that, from my understanding and municipality, is untouchable. So, I mean, it can't be, it can't be messed with, so I mean, I have, I have, as a, as a citizen, my concerns is how in the world are we gonna, I'm kind of in your shoes at this point, yes, I mean, I'm a, I'm a councilman, but these things have never really gotten, happened so to this point to where it's really, it's kind of opened our eyes, like, hey, we've got issues at A, B, C, and D, now what do we do to fix it? So it, it's just a lot of stair step processes that I'm afraid we're gonna have, we just need to start somewhere and just kind of start pushing through, but we need to know the right people to connect with and, and to contact, and I really think, me personally, I think our representatives are a starting point, and then we've got to figure out what avenue in the state, I mean, this is a state of emergency, right? So I mean, that, that oper- you know, that kind of, that kicks in FEMA, it's a different, you know, it brings a whole different level of assistance, I don't know exactly what that looks like person to person or business to business, but I mean, we've got enough destruction that surely to goodness, somebody can give us some answers there, so it's my suggestion that, to, to the mayor, uh, and maybe bring Paige in this too, just, just to be able to get communication done, that we need to be talking to those type people in those, in those legislative branches to, to see what our options are. I mean, because at this point, the way Richard's explaining Highway fifty-three, if it is in fact by law still the state, we need to get them to do something. I mean, we've got to have, I mean, somebody's got to be responsible, Seth, right?
Right.
So.
I think that's what we're asking for, you know, and
Oh, absolutely.
Now, you were, you were addressing like the, the, the tile being clean, mine was, uh, not mine, but the tile that goes under our, beside our property, the creek, and then under the, the road, men from my church crawled in there the last time we flooded and pulled out logs, probably about that big in diameter, just pulled the logs out, pulled brush out, we pulled them up on the side of the road, because we didn't have nowhere to put them. Um, so it was clean this time, and when we went down there after the water receded, guess what was there? One little log, about that long and that big, stopped the water, and then some brush came in behind, one small log, and caused even higher water to rise on our property, once again damaging our home, uh, and not only that, it backed up water into our fellowship hall, probably about four inches through. It, it's just been a mess, you know, and, and it's just happened over and over again, so, um, um, you know, councilman, I appreciate that, that was, that was a, you know, uh, you know, someone taking the initiative and moving forward with this, because, you know, we have issues, you're citizens, we pay taxes, we're, we're living here, we're residents of South Carthage, and we, we just want to know that we're working as a, as a, um, a city council and as a mayor to help us resolve this problem. And, and, um, going back to what, uh, Mr. Richard was saying earlier, you know, first of all, we can't bicker back and forth with Tennessee on who owns what, we need to get to the nitty gritty and find out who's doing what. Because if the buck keeps getting passed, that's years going by, and that many more floods that's gonna happen, not only to myself, but these men who are trying to feed their families out of these businesses as well as apartments, you know, that were flooded, which I can't speak for at the moment because he's not here tonight, but all these different people who are just trying to feed their families and make a living. Now, you know, Mr. Butler lost, there's, I walked through his building, there's no telling how much money this man has lost, because insurance is not gonna give him a dime. Nothing, for all his loss of pallets full of goods that go out on online auctions. You know, Lance is now gonna, is, are you going to most likely go out of business, or are? He's going out of business.
Yeah, I mean, I, I had six feet of water inside my building, there were eighty inches of water in my apartment lot, I had to build a full table on the water line.
Yeah, my office is just down from you, Lance, I know it was awful, I hated it.
And, and, you know, we just, we, I think we as concerned citizens want to know, what are y'all gonna do about being proactive to figure this out? Because we cannot keep having this happen, period. And you guys, we, we appreciate what you're doing, I don't want you to feel like that, you know, we're coming in like a bull in a china shop, but at the same time, it's our livelihoods. Can I ask any of the council tonight, do you sleep in your dining room? I do. I sleep in my dining room, because I know where to go.
Okay, I think we can all agree, everyone here can all agree that infrastructure almost everywhere needs to be updated. Um, but like Seth had mentioned, Richard had mentioned, and our mayor had mentioned, there are steps that we will have to take to do that. Um, I feel confident that probably with all this rain that come through in March, probably more than likely, I would say the majority of citizens had some type of water damage to their property or to their homes, um, and that's something that you don't foresee necessarily until after it happens. Um, and so I'm in agreeance with Seth, I think we probably need to just get, start with our representatives. Um, it is a state of emergency, infrastructure is a state of emergency. Um, and now with all of this rain and things, it is time to take steps to improve infrastructure. take steps to improve infrastructure. Um, because I'm like, I agree with you, this can't keep happening. Um, and I feel like we're not the only municipality that this has happened to in the month of March and in the past, nor will it happen, it may, will happen again in the future. Um, but, um, I agree, we need to take steps to update infrastructure so that damages are minimal to none. Uh, but when it comes to the weather, I think it's something that you can maybe foresee, but you just can't plan for. Um, you never know how much it's gonna rain. You never know how much it's gonna flood. You just have to have your preparations and things along those lines. Um, so we do need to meet with our representatives. It is a state of emergency that our infrastructure needs to be updated. Uh, we had mentioned several months ago, a lot of the new businesses and new homes that are built in our city, um, the towels under their driveways or their towels up and down the roads. The builders are not putting in the correct sized towels for water to flow. Um, there's a lot of water. If those small towels are blocked, the water and debris either blocks the tile completely, goes over driveway, floods yards, floods roads. Um, so that is something, the size of towels and the size of drains is something, just something that, that sounds that simple is such a big deal. And, um, so that's something we had mentioned before as well.
Right. And, and I think, and, and thank you very much for that. And what, what I think maybe for y'all to consider moving forward when people are building is some sort of rainwater runoff codes, some sort of codes. I mean, I called down to City Hall and talked to Ms. Jeanette. Um, and by the way, your, your ladies at City Hall are doing a phenomenal job. But, um, I talked to Ms. Jeanette and I asked her, I said, can you please send me a copy of your rainwater runoff codes or anything like that you have? She says, we have none. You know, as we grow as a city, infrastructure is gonna have to be, it, I mean, it's gonna have to grow with it. Just like the graphics, for example, and, and if I may say this real quick, even on an average rain, my back parking lot in my church, at my church is getting destroyed by all the runoff on my, that rolling hill subdivision and Sanderson's Road right there. Every bit of the water comes down on me. Have y'all been back there? Have you seen where I'm at? I'm at the bottom of the hill and I am getting drowned in every, even a small rain. It'll be about two and a half to three inches deep and almost as wide as my parking lot, and it funnels down right next to my house and then goes out to the creek. Thank God it doesn't flood my house on an average rain, but it's too close for comfort. You know, that, that in, in itself is gonna have to be addressed somewhere. I don't know who's liable for that right now, but right now I think our biggest concern is these tiles. And then we'll, we'll, we also need to talk about that as well because I am, my church is getting absolutely swamped every time it drains because there's no curbs, there's no storm drains, there's nothing. And it's a hill and it all comes across me. Um, if I might, uh, Ryan, which was, uh, in here earlier, Mr. Rogers, he, he floods almost every time, you know, that it rains, real good soaking rains, his basement will take on water because he's right there in front of our property. So he's taken the brunt force of a lot of that too. Uh, I believe, uh, Ryan and Brandy, their basement floods, uh, from time to time because there's nothing to divert this water from any of these neighbors that are here tonight, you know, that are, uh, concerned about, hey, what are we doing here? What, what are we doing about the runoff? Uh, what is our future? Are we gonna look and, and adopt codes for our city so that this doesn't continue to happen? And then somebody builds a big subdivision, whoever's downstream, oh, so sorry, you know, sorry, because we're changing the geographics of the landscape. More water's flowing down concrete, more water's flowing down asphalt, more water, you know, so the ground's not able to absorb. So, you know, maybe, uh, talking in your meetings, that would be something that you would, uh, adopt and, and moving forward in the near future of coming up with some sort of rainwater codes to help prevent this from happening just on an average rain like I experienced through our parking lot in our house.
One thing you might want to look at pastors is, who's got more money, the state of Tennessee or South Carthage?
I don't know, but I do know this. I don't have any connections to the state of Tennessee, but if we work together, you know, we may be able to get some of these issues resolved.
What I'm trying to get at is an example, when you're talking about who owns that road. Now, if, let's say it costs a million dollars to, uh, fix what you're talking about. Well, the only way the town can get a million dollars is to either up property taxes tremendously or go borrow it, and then they're gonna have to up ta- taxes to get it. Whereas the state has got more of a bundle to go to. That's, that's just for you to think about. I'm not saying that's the way it is, but that's for you to think about. I mean, they, they'll put out projects, a million dollars or more and take it out of their treasury. So they take it from places where the water doesn't run and put it where the water does. And, uh, one other problem that the South Carthage has, anytime you want to put rules and regulations of any kind, you got people down there saying, ah, I live in South Carthage and now I've got it here. So I don't, government tell me what to do. We have that every time we try to put any type of regulations in. We've been chewed now, uh, over the billing inspector would be being too tough. You can't win. It'd be the same way there. So those, that's just a couple of things for you to talk about, uh, to think about. And, uh, these people I'm sure will take it on, but, uh, POTUS and, uh, Terry Land need to come and let us give them the, have a meeting. When's the last time they've had a meeting down here and invited all the people in? Uh, but, you know, and when, when they come, you and your people need to show up and let them know what it's a major problem for.
Oh, they. By the phone calls, but, um, you know, and, and I, and I, Mr. Richard, I do appreciate that. I, I, I get what you're saying on, on, you know, raising taxes and stuff like that, you know, and I'm not by no means suggesting that be done, but what I am suggesting is let's be proactive and move forward. Let's not, you know, pass the buck. Let's as a community rally together and let's come up with some solutions to all these issues because it's been like this for years. Sir, I'm from Knoxville. We have runoff from where I'm, you know, it's a bigger city. I get it. But there's runoff codes for a reason to prevent this from happening, you know, uh, and they are very strictly enforced. And, um, you know, so I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm just merely suggesting, let's come together and brainstorm and figure this out because it, it's gone on long enough.
Well, I don't disagree with you there pastor. It's, uh, I'm just saying, in the time I've been over there and the time I know about before as a practicing attorney, it's just been turmoil when you try to enforce regulations on people. They don't want regulations on parking. They don't want regulations on what they gotta do inside the building. They don't want to have to install fire sprinklers. They don't want to have so many doors. It's just, but anyhow, you're right. Let's put it together and I'll do what I can to help. And I'm sure that, uh, council people, do you have any flooding up at Lafayette?
Oh, yeah.
Shane?
I had flooding in my, I had flooding in my house overnight. That's what I've been saying. Y'all know where I live up here on Bradford Hill. And I mean, my basement flooded the whole nine yards. And, you know, when I used to work over at South Carthage, the last, I think it was 2010 was the last time that I can remember the big flood. Now, I seen Sonny sitting there behind the pasture. And, uh, you know, we've had, we've actually had flooding in Wagner subdivision where water ain't got nowhere to go. I mean, it, it's happened before, but it is something that we're gonna have to do as a council and as, as citizens. We're gonna have to look into it and figure out what we need to do because we, we are getting more water than we've ever got over here. It seems like we got more roads, more water that's getting submerged. And, you know, we, we need to sit down and try to figure out what we can do. And I just wanna, I'll speak on that. The road, excuse me, the road on the state, uh, you know, I can uphold that what was going on there. That road is still owned by the state because they sent us a thing trying to get us to, to take it. And we would not take it because we was done having problems with water down there, right below the house, uh, in the church where the hole kept coming in the road and all that. So that part of, you know, state still owns that. And I'm not trying to pass the buck. I'm just saying that, you know, I, I remember the vote denied the council meeting on that. But, uh, we do need to try to figure out something to do with some of this water. And it's gonna, it's gonna have to start with cupboards. Uh, it's gonna have to start with probably some new ditch lines and some runoffs and some things that we need to look at. And, uh, I, I wanna say, uh, I appreciate them for bringing this up and I appreciate the business owners that's there because, you know, without them, we don't have a whole lot. And, you know, we'll try to do whatever we can to try to help.
Paige, Paige, this is Ricky Dixon. Can I speak just a second? Hey, a lot of what y'all talking about is true, but as I'm building in South Carthage, there is runoff laws in South Carthage. I had to have an engineer design my runoff from a mini storages up there. So don't say they don't exist because they do. When I did my apartments, they say people argues about sprinklers. I, I am one that's for doing things in the correct way, the correct manner. I even raised my building higher than the engineer recommended they do it to keep it dry. Didn't work. So I'm not fussing about having too much water. My recommendation would be to form a committee. Don't just say, well, let's do this. Form a committee that's gonna take this by the horns and use some of the community, use some of the, the staff of the city and get a hold of something and, and bite it like a bulldog until you get some answers. Uh, I, I was wondering why, why my apartments flooded Sunday because it had never come close. I thought I had it higher than it need to be. And I went down behind an old feed mill and the tile off in the hole there going to the river was plugged solid. So that, you know, my sin come, came from behind that feed mill and all that litter that's down there. And I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm contradicting some of the things everybody's saying about no runoff laws because there is, okay? Or they're making me do it. I'm not arguing about it. I didn't argue about sprinklers, new codes, therefore our betterment. Okay? But that's not necessarily what we're talking about. We're talking about getting our problems remedied. So I would recommend form a committee. And another way you're talking about raising taxes, doing this, that, grants is a good way not to raise taxes. Okay? But you would have to start by forming a committee to, to get a hold of this and bite it and get answers.
And.
Okay.
And there are grants. I am confident there are grants for infrastructure needs that can be applied. Um, I like your idea of forming a committee. I appreciate you popping in and letting us know about, um, things that you've done because you have built quite a bit here in South Carthage. Um, uh, and so I appreciate you popping in and letting us know that there are some, but, um, I think flooding has become an issue, not just for our city. Uh, I think it's city, county, state, it's a local and state issue. Um, I don't think we're the only ones addressing this issue at this time. I feel like there's other committees, other councils that are talking about the same thing we are right now. Um, and so, um, I like the idea of forming a committee so we can get the ball rolling and quickly because it is, like Seth said, I believe it is a state of emergency. Things can't keep flooding. People can't keep losing businesses. Um, it's, it's just something, as times progress and cities progress and grow, so does the infrastructure. It has to change. Um, and so, um, I appreciate Ricky letting us know things.
We may get flooded again. Okay. I've got my office flooded twice. We may get flooded again, but if we don't get started to where we can get an end in sight, we're gonna get flooded over and out for fifty years. So if, if we get a committee to get a hold of it. Yeah, I'm five hundred year flood plane, by the way, and I got it twice in a month.
Oh, Ricky. Lord.
That's just the way it is. Okay. And that's, that's my two cents worth. I'm not trying, I'm just trying to explain some things you might not know.
Well, I, I'll say one, I'll say a few more points and then I'll be quiet, uh, and let the rest of the council and, and if Seth, the group up there, Sonny, I see you setting up the camera, um, just kind of, of coming off of what you said there Ricky about, and I appreciate you bringing up the new codes that you had in, that you had to abide by because really a lot of the things, and back to Pastor London and the group out there, a lot of the things that you're seeing coming off of the back of that hill, off of the subdivision that, that's causing even the minor problems at this point of your church are things that I think were built previously that's just never really had a lot of, of abruptment to abiding by anything from a code standpoint. You know, I mean, it just kept on being built and, and things kept developing and it was just never really, yeah, just couldn't have. Cause I mean, there's a lot of things back there that probably shouldn't be the way that they are. Uh, but it's important, it's just the way that it is now. But these, these new enforcements have been, you know, we have had some and we've had some Bach on it. And, and Ricky bless his heart, he's, he's abided by the rules and, and we appreciate that. And, and one thing that I think now that, that we have got that's right in front of our faces, and Seth, this is going back to us approaching the state of Tennessee, approaching our representatives, approaching the right people to connect with to get the answers and bite, like Ricky's saying, is it's unfortunate, but it's true in most cases before assistance is given by the state or anything of a larger government entity, there's got to be some severe damage and some really strong needs out there on top of whatever else they've got their agenda set out to do. And I, I feel now that, that it's, it's no way that you can turn a blind eye to what's happened to our citizens here just, just in this stretch of road, but, but all over the county. I mean, it's, it's, it's immense. I mean, and there's enough ammunition that I feel, not only as a cit- a citizen, but a councilman, that we've got enough ammunition now that, that we should be talking to these people and literally, I mean, for lack of better terms, taking the bull by the horn and just, and, and biting as hard as we can bite. I mean, worst thing they can do is tell us no down the road. But I mean, why, why are we not, you know, why are we not trying that now? You know, that's what we need to be doing. So I, I just wanted to throw a few of those things in there and, uh, appreciate everybody that's been on so far.
Sonny, do you have anything to add?
Uh, yes. Uh, I had Tim up here yesterday, uh, Tim, my representative, my DC district coordinator, and we met with each one of the, uh, business owners here in, in the city, uh, and looked at it. Unfortunately, uh, FEMA is not going to be able to help the business owners that has a tremendous amount of loss. Uh, the best can be done for them is a small business loan, SBA, uh, out of about maybe a percent or less than a, a percent, uh, a loan to them to, uh, get them back on their feet. That would be up to them. But unfortunately, FEMA doesn't, uh, have anything for them. Now, if they'd have been a homeowner, uh, without flood insurance, then that's on a different category and FEMA would have been able to step in and, and help them. But this is the bad part about flooding and it's a business and no flood insurance, uh, they're just out there on their own at the mercy of, well, miss, SBA. Um, we're talking with FEMA yesterday and then, uh, about four thirty this afternoon, uh, Representative Weaver called me, uh, and told me to tell everybody here and, and you all that there would be a, uh, state representative up here next week. I don't know what day, uh, but they will contact me and then I'll contact the mayor, uh, and let him know, uh, when that representative is coming, uh, to look at the situation. And Timo will be back to, uh, I talked with the second in command with Timo, uh, that's in the middle region of Tennessee. Uh, he was showing his concern and asking a lot of questions about this. And this is an ongoing problem. I, I've been doing, uh, rescue for forty-one years and we've been over here multiple times, uh, closing the road down. Well, the water closed around, we're blocking to make sure that nobody drives off in it. The last two floods we had, uh, we actually had to do water rescues, uh, because it trapped, uh, Mr. Butler and his family in their home. And we had to send our swift water rescue team in to get them out. And then prior to this flood, the February twenty eighth, we had, uh, two people that drove off in the water. Uh, we had to rescue them. And then we had a lady drove off in the water this last flood. Uh, we had to rescue her, uh, by sending in our swift water rescue team. So it is a problem, a serious problem. Uh, we've not had them drive off in the water before. Uh, one thing I would recommend to the city is that you maybe put up signs along the roadway that are, uh, highway prone to flood. And maybe that would get people's attention because it takes us a while to get in route to set up. We're not there at the base. We're volunteers. Uh, we have to go pick our equipment up. We have to get our equipment in route. That particular flood, the, uh, twenty-eighth of this month, uh, last month, uh, we were not just located in the South Carthage area. We were all over the county, uh, rescuing people, uh, driving off in the water or trapped in their homes and things like that. So we're limited what we can do. Uh, it'd be nice if we could station by there all the time during a flood and, and make sure that. Uh, it'd be nice if we could station by there all the time during a flood and, and make sure that, you know, everybody was safe. But it takes us a while to set up. So that would be one of my recommendations, that you would put signs up there uh, stating that this area is prone to flood during heavy rain. And maybe that would get their attention and, and do that. But this is a mitigation problem and we do have a hazardous mitigation plan for Smith County. Uh, each city should have a copy of that hazardous mitigation plan. If you don't, I have copies at my office, but there is a mitigation plan. And, and talking with Tima today, uh, this is a mitigation issue. And you can get uh, grants through uh, uh, litigation grants uh, to help with a situation like that. Uh, so if there's anything that I can do to help, uh, I'm glad to do. I'm your MA director in Smith County. Uh, I'm always available, uh, if there's anything you want to do. Uh, Mayor, I understand you said you had uh, sewage pump issues?
Yeah, we uh, we got a, we got a reading place I wanted, Dr. Donaldson's.
Okay, okay, well, that's something we need to document then uh, and get turned in. Well, once the governor does a declaration, and that's what we're waiting on now, for the governor to do the declaration. Uh, once he does that, then we'll know where we're at. Uh, and if they, we meet the threshold in the state of Tennessee, which is, I believe is nine million dollars. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, you've sat in on these uh, meetings before, but I believe it's nine million dollar window. I don't think there'll be any issues there of, of beating that window. Uh, Smith County has to meet their um, uh, a little over seventy-five thousand. I don't think that's going to be an issue either whatsoever. Uh, but once all this hap, and we've still got flooding uh, going on in the state of Tennessee. And until everything is cleared away, all the flood waters have receded and all that and, and property's been evaluated, I, I don't see the governor making a declaration right now. It may be another week or two uh, before that happens. And in another week or two, we could have another monstrous rain, who knows? Uh, but like I say, we've been here many times uh, blocking this road to make sure that, so it's, it is an ongoing problem. But these last two times, especially the last one, it was one of the most serious I've seen in my life. So like I say, I just passed that along, they will be represented from the state of Tennessee up here next week. And there will be Tima will be coming back too and we'll get with you and, and we'll look the situation over. And if they want to talk with any of these uh, homeowner, uh, business owners, uh, then we'll, we'll contact them and let them know too. And if we won't, we can meet over there at the rescue squad facility and we'll sit down and talk. Or we'll come to each uh, business and we'll look it over and, and go from there, just whatever y'all want to do.
Are you aware of uh, the problems of moving our barriers both times we had to flood? The cars hit the water.
Somebody moved the barriers?
They moved the barriers. I was down there one night when, when they did that. And uh, David Apple took a, a car and put up there where they couldn't get by. This last time, they was going, we had it blocked down here on this end. They was going in to Joey's parking lot and getting around, uh, the, the water went down, but it don't take but three, four inches of water to float your car.
That's an ongoing problem throughout, throughout the county. Uh, we have that problem with us going out in the county and barricading roads that are flooded. And if you're not there with them, uh, we'll go back a lot of times and we'll find our cones, our barricade, throw it off in the creek or off in the water or up on the bank. Uh, people will go through to see how bad the flood is and they'll come back through and they won't even close the barricades back, they'll just leave them open and all that. So that's an ongoing problem. Uh, and I, I don't really know unless, like I told my guys, when y'all come over here and you block these roads, block them with vehicles, do not block them with your cones thing, block them with vehicles. And that way, nobody can get around you maybe. Uh, there, you're talking about at your facility, uh, your uh, place there in the Wagner's, where you're talking about Wagner's parking lot, yeah, uh, it's easy to go up through the parking lot and go around. Uh, people don't use common sense anymore. Uh, I was a state trooper one time, I was on a wreck scene and state trooper said, I wish there was a slot on my ti, area on my ticket where I could write, you know, stupid. Uh, you know, but there's no place on there to, uh, because people just don't use common sense, uh, especially in, in high water. And you see what happened to that lady and those others that we uh, even Sunday, we had to go in Riddleton and rescue a man that drove his vehicle off in the water uh, because he didn't think it was that deep. Uh, and, and, and he did. But anyway, uh, they, yeah, that's an ongoing problem throughout the county, people moving barricades. Uh, I, I wish that uh, the officers could catch them doing that and write them a nice ticket.
Highway patrol said he wished he could catch them, they wouldn't like him so good.
Well, that, that's true. Uh, uh, your, your officers or highway patrol, anybody, sheriff's department, anybody. Uh, and the word get out that, you know, it's a very stiff fine because if you move those barricades and somebody else comes along and don't realize there was barricades there, uh, they could lose their life. Uh, and, and that would be, so we've been very fortunate. Uh, no lives have been lost in these last two floods, but you know, uh, we can't be that fortunate forever, I don't think. And, and it's going to come one day, uh, and, and that's going to be devastating. Any questions? All right, I'll go to Seth. I'll talk to you next week, Mayor.
All righty.
Hey, before we, before we log out, uh, Mayor, thank you for listening to us tonight. We appreciate your time and your ear, we really do. Council men and women, thank y'all for your time. Um, you know, please, please understand, you know, we, we do appreciate what you're doing. Um, you know, and, and if there's anything that we can do to try to help out in this situation, you know, I, I'm sure I probably speak for anybody in this room. You know, don't hesitate to reach out. I mean, we, we just want a solution. You know, we want our lives put back together, we want to get our homes and our businesses back going again. And, and we will be part of the solution and not part of the problem. So if we can help you guys in any way, we, we really um, just reach out to us and let us know.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank y'all very much. Thank you once again for your time, we really do appreciate it.
Thank you Seth.
Okay, thank you, y'all have a good night.
Report from board members. Tam, you got anything?
Uh, nothing from my end.
Christie? I guess Christie doesn't go.
No, she's not, I'm muted.
He's muted.
Sorry, nothing I'm aware of, sorry.
Seth?
No sir.
Jane?
I'm good.
I need a, I need one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I want, um, I just remembered police committee meeting, second Tuesday of the month at six, we've moved to the Ag Center.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock. And it'll be at the Ag Center.
Yes ma'am, I'm tracking as well.
All right. I get a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm saying, I've, I've looked through my notes. Did we not get a fire report for the last quarter?
No, we didn't get one.
No.
Okay, just checking to make sure I didn't miss it.
No, he didn't, he didn't get one, I think he was on his honeymoon.
Well, I'm gonna come motion that we adjourn until the April or through the May twenty-twenty-one council meeting.
Motion adjourn.